Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to the Wednesday meeting of the March State Board of Education meeting. We're glad you're all here. We've got a number of guests today and we have some really exciting agenda items. We've got a couple of different groups of students that will be here today and that is always a highlight. We're always thrilled to have the students here. First of all, all board members are present except Ann Maw and she will come on by telephone, possibly later in the agenda. So, just so we know. Also, we've got some guests, Dr. Elliott, a couple of Kelly people. Do you want to introduce? Have your Kelly folks come up and introduce themselves, please?
Three days this year and I've never done that in my life. With me today are Trey Moller and Adam Solner and I'll ask them to come forward and introduce themselves.
Yeah, come on up and say which district you're with, please.
I'm Adeline Solner. I'm the Executive Director of Academic Affairs at Valley Center.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Trey Moller Superintendent, Galena 499.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for coming. We appreciate the Kelly organization and the work that they do with our administrators. So, thank you very much. Take a look at the agenda or if there's any changes to the agenda. If not, I'd like a motion to approve the March 11th agenda. We have a motion by Ben, a second by Jean. All in favor, please raise your hand. It looks like a nine zero. Thank you very much. Okay, our first agenda item is very exciting for all of us, especially since we'll go to the School for the Deaf next month. But we have today some students with us from the School for the Deaf and I'm going to turn it over to Michelle and she's going to introduce our students. That would be fine, sure. Whatever you're comfortable with.
Good morning. I have the privilege to be appointed to the School for the Deaf as the liaison. I'm on the negotiation committee for the School for the Deaf and I'm also on their advisory council. And last year I spent the day with the students that were down as pages and I get to do that again this year. Today, it's my honor to have these students attend our meeting. I want to commend the Kansas State, or the Kansas School for the Deaf Students for investing their time and energy in exploring how government and education works at this level in Kansas. The future of America and the state of Kansas, especially for the deaf community, is in your hands. If there's one takeaway from your day here in Topeka, I would hope that it is in our democratic republic and system of governments, that it's up to the individual, it's up to you to make it relevant and favorable to your lives. I want to thank you for your interest in the Kansas State Board of Education and I hope that you'll take a lot out of today being over to Topeka. You have a very, very busy day looking at your agenda and it's packed full. I'll be over this afternoon to have lunch with you and to spend the afternoon and I'm looking forward to that.
We are glad to have you here today. The State Board always enjoys hearing from the students and I think Luann, the students are going to share some things with us. We've got some time for that today. Okay, great. Well, we look forward to hearing from them.
Okay, so these are our wonderful students and teachers here. I'm going to let them introduce themselves individually and then they're going to state where they're from and maybe I know what's interesting about being a page today and then when you guys introduce yourselves, too. Okay. I'm Sethan Rolleson and I'm from Gardner, Kansas and I'm excited to be here today to learn about all the legislators and how that process runs.
Why don't we have him go ahead and step up to the podium because the video will be up towards the podium anyway. Yeah, we want your face out there.
Okay, so introduce myself again.
Please.
Okay. My name is Sethan Rolleson and I'm from Gardner, Kansas and I'm excited to be here about learning on the legislation and how it runs. Thank you.
My name is Alina. This is my name sign. I'm excited to learn about how the Board of Education runs. I'm out from Olathe.
My name is Xavier Lehtrend and I'm from Linden, Kansas and I want to learn about how the legislation works. Thank you.
My name is Jamika. I'm from Olathe, Kansas and I'm excited also about the State Board of Ed and the legislators as well.
My name is Pointavis. I'm from Wichita, or sorry, Olathe and Wichita. I'm here to learn about legislation.
My name is Avery. I live in Overland Park, Kansas. I'm here to also learn about the Board of Ed and hopefully learn something from that today.
I'm Cameron Skamancy. I'm also from the Olathe, Kansas area. I'm the teacher assistant at the Kansas School for the Deaf.
I'm Amanda Hubbard and I teach history.
I teach social studies in the secondary department with Amanda. Last year, I got my third year pen. I want to thank you all for your support and help through all the years. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
I think that's it.
Okay, well, just to explain a little bit, we have 10 members. One of our members is not here today. We all represent different parts of the state of Kansas. Your representative is Michelle Dombrowski and Steve Roberts is close up there in the more Overland Park than Olathe area. And we all represent four senate seats. So, when you go over and meet senators today, each of us represent four different senate seats. And for instance, in my area, I represent the Wichita area. And in the Wichita area, I have four senate seats. So, my area geographically is very small, but I have the same number of voters. Now, my colleague over here, Jean Clifford, wave, Jean. Jean represents western Kansas. She also has four senate seats, but she has 89 counties?
Forty.
Oh, 40 counties, 89 school districts. Eighty-four school districts. So, she has a very large, large geographic area. We like the joke that I could walk across my district. Well, if Jean did that, it'd take her a while. So, what we do up here is we work with the schools on a state level. Now, we also have two of our members, our board member, Deana Horace, and our board member, Jim Porter, that go over regularly and work with the legislators. So, during the legislative season, they're over there frequently, almost daily, to work with the legislators as far as any laws that they may be passing to make sure that we work with them to make sure everything's in the best interest of our students. So, we would, board members may have something to say, but also if you young folks have questions of us and what we do as far as our work, because although we don't pass laws, we do pass regulations. For instance, School for the Deaf just recently went through accreditation, I believe.
Correct.
And so, the accreditation process that you went through is something that we regulate. So, all of the schools in the state of Kansas and actually some private schools go through accreditation through the KSDE. So, if you have some questions and your teachers, you've got some teachers here, they have to be licensed and their licensure comes through the State Department. So, those are some things that we oversee also. So, there's a number of things that we oversee and the legislature does laws for the state. We also have local school board members. So, each school district throughout the state has local school board members and there's seven elected local school board members. You can see we have 10 here and I explained we each represent four senate seats. So, if you have questions, we would welcome questions from you as far as what we do and maybe the difference between what we do and what the legislators across the street do.
So, what do you currently do for work right now? What is your current line of work?
Well, a number of us are retired. I'm a retired school district administrator in Wichita. I have a number of others. So, Mr. McNeese is a retired school district administrator. But let's just go down the line and say what our current or retired.
Yes, I was an art teacher. Middle school and high school. And while I was a librarian.
Well, Michelle's reminding me.
And I also am in sales.
I'm a math and physics tutor as well as an Uber and Lyft driver.
Well, I'm a retired car dealer. I started off though in PTA as a volunteer, then I served on my local school board and ended up here on the state board.
And I'm a retired school superintendent.
I'm married and have six children, two still are in high school, so I'm not quite retired from that yet, but I am retired from the United States Air Force.
An officer in the United States Air Force, a JAG officer, if I remember right.
An attorney in the Air Force JAG.
I'm not old, so I still work. I work in music and theater and owned my own business for about six years.
Okay, great. Another question.
So, would you consider this your dream job, to be on this?
It's interesting, when I was getting ready to retire from the Wichita School District, I had a lot of people encourage me to run for the State Board of Education. I never, ever thought I would run for a political office. So, dream job, I don't know about that. I have enjoyed it, I will have to say, I've enjoyed it. I certainly enjoy working with my colleagues. We've got a great board and very appreciative of the hard work that they do. So, maybe not a dream job, but I've enjoyed it. Anybody else? Jim?
Yeah, I wasn't planning on running either. We were elected, but I was, the incumbent kind of conned me into it right before the deadline and so I did. But it's something that I really enjoyed and actually I believe it's because we have the opportunity to make a difference in the lives of kids, it's probably the most rewarding thing I've ever done.
Others, Michelle?
Gaining so much knowledge from the School for the Deaf and working with Luann and the students, it's been an incredible experience.
We're going to ask the commissioner to kind of share his role because he's not elected and he can explain a little bit of the difference why he's up here, we're glad he's up there, and what his role is.
So, I'm Randy Watson and I am not elected as the chair said. I am hired by the 10-member board to serve at their pleasure, to execute their policies and their regulations throughout the state of Kansas. As I think that you know, this board serves as your Board of Education and School for the Blind also. And so, we also have direct oversight and I work with Luann and John Hardy at the School for the Blind to try to make sure that you're getting the best possible education. So, I'm just a worker behind the scenes of the work that they do and very proud to work for them.
Thank you, Randy. We're glad to have you. Janet, were you going to share also?
Mine may be a little bit different. I'm from Wyandotte County. I live in Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas. I represent Wyandotte-Levinworth-Jefferson, or Douglas said a little bit Johnson, but the reason I serve on the board and I serve locally is because I represent a larger group of low socioeconomic students. And for many of these students, education is their only escape. And I think I'm so proud of the districts that I represent because they are working tirelessly and they're so committed to helping these students rise above the poverty level that they had and be able to be successful in life. And I'm especially proud of these schools and I am in the area with the School for the Blind. And by the way, we are the local boards for these, both of these schools and I'm amazed by each of you, these schools, and what they're doing and so I congratulate both of them.
I would have to say this is my dream job. I love being on the State Board of Education. Before I did this, I was on my local school board in Garden City for 10 years and I got to go into classrooms, I got to hear about programs and new things that we were doing in education to help students. And I get to do that now for 84 school districts across those 40 counties. And I really enjoy going into every single school and every single classroom, meeting the students, meeting the teachers, the administrators, and seeing what they're doing. And we're doing great things in Kansas with education for our students and we're so excited to have all students be involved in that. And we're very excited to have you all today to meet with us and to be able to talk to you. So, thank you all for coming. We appreciate it very much.
Anybody else want to? Ben?
I'll take a crack at it. It is, it's been a wonderful honor to represent about 15 counties across central Kansas and coming from a small town, who knew that I would have the opportunity to work with 39 school districts of various sizes and various populations and the challenges they face and be able to serve them and see how I can better their lives from up here and give them a voice and also work with them and make their jobs better and give them support and encouragement that we can, we can make Kansas the best in the world in terms of education.
Anybody else want to share? One of the things that I might add, this is my eighth year, I think there's about four of us that this is our eighth year, we all came on at the same time. And even though I represent the Wichita area, so when you're elected, you are elected to represent that area, it became, and mostly the districts, whereas Jean has 84 districts, I have five. But one of my districts is very, very large. But one of the things when I, shortly after I got on, it became very apparent that even though I represent the Wichita area, I really represent the entire state. So, as I was very knowledgeable about what larger school districts do, I became much more knowledgeable about rural school districts, suburban school districts, districts in western Kansas, southeast Kansas, and northern Kansas, all over the state. So, when we make decisions, our decisions, we certainly represent our own district, but our decisions are based on what's good for all the students in the state of Kansas, including us being directly the Board of Education for the School for the Deaf and the School for the Blind. We keep that in mind also. So, you know, we do represent areas of the state of Kansas, but we also, I think I'd probably speak for all of us, we all certainly understand the impact statewide of what we do and our policies and procedures and regulations are impacted over the entire state. Randy, anything else you'd like to share about the vision or anything that we're working on? We've got a few minutes and then we're going to have pictures.
I'd just like to say, I think what all 10 of these people have in common here on the board is that they have a deep commitment to all of you and almost half a million public and private school students that they accredit through their schools, to make sure that we do everything from a policy standpoint to prepare you for whatever things you want to do after you leave your school, in this case, the School for the Deaf, trying to help you chart a course that will help you be a successful adult. That's not an easy task and it's not a simple, one-size-fits-all task. It's multi-dimensional. And I know that they work very hard with that vision every day to see that happens. So, what you will experience at the School for the Deaf over the next several years is a ramping up of higher academic expectations, higher expectations to get out like you're doing today and experience the legislature and how other parts work and really a real emphasis on the transition program to either your post-secondary career choice or work, whatever that may be.
We have two additional very important people up here I want to introduce and the State Board also has an attorney that represents us, Mark Ferguson, is actually from the Overland Park, Olathe area. And so, he actually works some with the School for the Deaf. So, Mark, if you want to introduce yourself, if you would please.
Good morning. I get the pleasure of working with the State Board of Education and the School for the Deaf and the School for the Blind in my professional capacity as an attorney. So, I work with Luann and the administration at the school. I've been out there and regularly worked with Luann and the school on a number of issues, including the School for the Blind as well. I come from a family of educators, so I enjoy the opportunity to work with the School for the Deaf and the Blind and for the State Board of Education in my professional capacity as an attorney.
The State Board also employs a secretary who keeps us all straight. She does a very important job. So, our State Board of Education secretary is Peggy Hill. And Peggy, you want to introduce yourself? And she also came from, you previously were in a school district.
I did. I am employed here at the Education Department, but I serve the board and I've been in this role for about seven years. I previously worked at a small school district in their district office for about nine years before that and I can truly say I love my job.
Okay, we would like the opportunity for some pictures. So, we'll do that and we'll get the whole board in and we'll kind of be right up in front of here and Ann will get us all organized and everything, so I'm sure we'll have to scrunch in a little bit. So, let's take an opportunity for a picture. And then, I know you have important things to do across the street, so enjoy your day. Absolutely. Okay, our next agenda item is a preview of the Kansas-Kans summer workshops, which are called Ignite 2020. And David Fernkoff is here to share with us what's going on this summer, so welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner Watson, and board members. Thank you for the chance to come here and tell you about our Kansas-Kans summer workshops, Ignite 2020. And before I go into detail, I want to recognize the co-chairs of the workshop. I have both Mr. Mike Pounds and then Ms. Paula Smith, both also work here for KSDE and without them, I don't know how far we'd be into this process. So, through the work of redesign at KSDE, we've come to the realization that to make movements that we're wanting to do, we really need to focus in more on the standards, get the educators having more knowledge and depth of the standards. And to do this, KSDE has paired with some of the service centers. We've paired with Greenbush, Smokey Hill, and Southwest Plains Regional Service Centers. We've been collaborating with them as we're designing what the workshops are going to look like this summer. And the workshops are going to be a two-days of rigorous professional development from early childhood all the way through 12th grade, along with having a breakout room for the administrators. And I believe you guys have a flyer, we have three locations that we're having these workshops at. We're starting in western Kansas and Garden City and then working our way back this direction. We're going to be in Goddard, Kansas, and then finally, we're going to end in Manhattan. And each breakout room are going to be content-specific standards with focusing in on personal learning, real-world application, and really just leading the way, getting a little bit more in-depth with the standards. If you've been with the board for a long time, you might remember the Summer Academies KSDE used to do, we're going back to more of the model that we used to do with the Summer Academies, having some intense instruction. There'll be actually 11 hours professional development that the attendees will be able to receive when they're in the rooms, instead of the model that we've been doing lately, which was just small breakout sessions. So, and I believe on the layout, I'm not going to read through the list, but you can see all the different layouts. We have everything from math to science to even have a CTE group, world language, social emotional, we're trying to hit all the different areas so the educators can have an area that they're interested in and that they work with, they can attend. So, I don't have a lot more detail to share, but I would like to answer any questions about our plans for the summer.
David, if any of the board members want to attend, how do they go about letting you know that they want?
Sure. So, Greenbush is actually hosting the enrollment, so they have it on their website, but if you just want to also email me or let Randy know, or like let Peggy know and we'll make sure to get you enrolled and have lunch for you when you're there and we'd be more than happy to have you at any of those locations.
Do we have a flyer or was? It's electronically in our packet? Okay, so it's electronically on our computer, board members. Peggy set us up an electronic piece, if you haven't seen it yet, so she's trying that out. I think she wants us to try it out. So, okay, okay, so you started Garden City?
Yep.
And then Goddard?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the Manhattan one?
Yes.
Okay. Board members' questions? In the past, I've gone to some of these. I don't always go to two days, but I've gone to some of them, they're excellent. And all different content areas and grade levels?
Yes.
CTE included also?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. McNeese?
I'd like to applaud the fact that we are having specific curricular and administrative areas on the standards themselves and I'm sure that you're going to be having individuals who are in the field making the presentations.
We're working with service centers and we also are using some of the experts in the field coming in to help do the training, so yes.
Well, that real-world application is really important. It validates tremendously the learning that they're going to get, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Breakouts will focus on content-specific standards, as Jim mentioned, real-world applications, and leading change. Change is hard.
Yes, sir.
That's why I came here in the first place, was really to do two things, two things and only two things I wanted to accomplish. When I first got here, I realized I couldn't do any of them in the first term, so I waited till the second term. And I... And I made a list of talking points that we reviewed yesterday in our meeting. One of those talking points is that the individual teacher should be responsible for their own professional development. I, I can't say that often enough. So as we go forward, I see that the trend will be for more specialization and less reliance on teaching all teachers how to be teachers of all students. If that makes sense. There's a body of knowledge required of firefighters and police officers and engineers, which is my, uh, that, that's the degree I got. But there isn't a body of knowledge required of all teachers beyond basic literacy. We hear about pedagogy all the time and how important it is to learn classroom management skills. Well, you know, I went to school for seventeen years. I kind of figured out how a classroom works. So while we have important things for teachers to learn in terms of pedagogical study, review of best practices, there's all sorts of things to be a continuous learner. I hope that this is the beginning of, uh, a best practice that allows individual teachers to be their individual best, so that we can let each student be his or her individual best. Thank you very much.
Other comments or questions, board members? It is, uh, um, on your agenda under number five is the, uh, workshop flyer. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you. I'm sure you'll be hearing from many of us as we sign up this summer to attend some of these and I'll have to look at my calendar and see what that looks like, but.
Absolutely. Thanks for your time. I do appreciate it.
Okay, we appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item, agenda item number six, is going to be a Kansas-Kan highlight. We're very excited today. And as I said earlier, always the best things is when the students come and speak with us and we're always excited about that. We have an opportunity today. Uh, we're going to hear from a student from Oakley High School. And I'm gonna let the Commissioner introduce her, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we are honored to have Avery Evans with us today. We, you know, as you know, I traveled to all, all the, uh, two-hundred-eighty-six public school districts and the thirty or some, uh, private systems that we accredit. And we, Jean and I had the pleasure to be in, in Oakley one, uh, one crisp sunny day though. And, uh, we got to meet Avery and some fantastic people at Oakley High School. Uh, her mom reached out to me and we, I just thought, what an opportunity that she could share some of the remarkable things she's doing. And you know, yesterday we talked about the individual and also engaging civically and giving back. Uh, she's done some remarkable things. So she, uh, graciously said yes. Carrie, her mother, uh, drove them there, here, uh, last night. So they're here today to, uh, share with you. So Avery, we're happy that you're here and we'll turn it over to you.
Welcome, Avery.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hello, everyone. My name is Avery Evans and I am here from Oakley High School. I am here today to explain to you all the buddy system and the salad bar, both in which I have helped created and to create and implement into our school. I have lived in Oakley for the majority of my life and I've been a pretty quiet kid, uh, pretty much up until this year. If you would have invited me to this meeting as a freshman, I absolutely would have said no. I would have said no because I never wanted to speak in front of anyone, anyone for any reason. If you would have tried to talk to me as a freshman, I would have tried to invert, end the conversation as quickly as possible. Because I was so shy, I couldn't even hold a simple conversation with anybody of your guys' standard. Now I can hold a conversation pretty well. I came up with the buddy system whenever I was hanging out with one of my friends outside of our school. I had told her that I thought we needed a way for the middle schoolers to talk to somebody without being scared of going to administration or family or their peers. And I thought we were in need of something because no one ever knows what's going on through a middle schooler's head. She suggested giving every middle schooler a high school buddy and I thought it was a good idea, but I didn't want to start out super big, so we limited it to ten students in the beginning. So I asked my friends and a teacher, Mrs. Weiniger, what they thought. And they all said that it was a good idea and they were all for it. Mrs. Weiniger felt very, very strongly about the topic and she helped me get everything organized to take it to our principal, Mrs. Everly. She loved the idea. She gave us some pointers on what we could fix up in order to take it to the superintendent, Mr. Bachwinkle. We fixed up everything that she suggested and she helped Mrs. Weiniger and I and one other of our students to present to Mr. Bachwinkle. He also loved the idea, but he had a few concerns, in which we edited and revised. He scheduled us for the next board meeting in January. The members of the board liked the idea, but they were more concerned about the future, in which we had not fully discussed yet. They voted for the system to be put into place, all to none. We had our first meeting with our little buddies last week. The first meeting went better than I thought it would. We simply just got to know our buddies by asking them about school and what they do outside of school for fun. The salad bar was created by a committee of the Principal's Council. The Principal's Council is a group of students handpicked by Miss Everly, who thinks, who she thinks can give her a good insight into what's happening in the school. In a meeting last year, someone brought up the idea of having a salad bar as an option for just the high schoolers for lunch. Most of the council liked the idea, so Miss Everly asked who would be interested in pitching the idea to the lunchroom manager, Kathy Dunn. I said that I would love to because I love salad bars and I thought that would be a good addition to our school. Miss Everly and two other students and I got together to figure out the details to propose to Kathy Dunn. We created a presentation and presented our idea to Kathy. She was not too fond of the idea because of her budget and that was the end of it for that year. Again, this year, Miss brought, Miss Everly brought it up. I, along with two other students, were, signed up to pitch the idea because we really wanted it. Since Kathy said no once, we decided to do some more research. Once we had some information, we created a presentation. We presented the new information to Kathy and she liked this plan better than the last one and she thought, she thought she could fit into our budget. We started this process in October and we had our salad bar trial in January. We had a follow-up meeting with Janu- with Kathy at the end of January. She said that the process that we had in place was working very well and we wanted, and that she wanted to continue the salad bar and it's still going to this day. And for my post-secondary plans, I have chosen to attend K-State University. I am following in my father's footsteps and going into business. I would say that I chose K-State, but I feel more like K-State chose me. I was looking at several different colleges and one day I just stopped and asked why I was spending all the money to look at other colleges whenever I knew where I needed to go. I want to go into business because it is involved in everyday life and I can find a job wherever I go. And that's all that I have.
Well, Avery, thank you very much. Sounds like you've got a couple of good projects there under your belt.
Mm-hmm.
So as a freshman, it would have been, uh, that would have been impossible for you, huh?
Yeah, for sure.
Ah, so what a difference a few years make.
Mm-hmm.
Board members, I'm sure you've got some questions that you'd like to ask. It looks like Jim Porter is up, so, Mr. Porter.
First of all, thank you. This is very exciting. I'm, I'm, I'm glad that you're here. I would have liked to have seen you as a freshman to see the, the transformation. I'm really can, I'm really interested in the buddy system. Uh, and the reason I am is because I believe that we have kids that are, that are isolated.
Yeah, I would agree.
That they're isolated. Is that part of the, part of your thought process? Cause, you know, people with connections, uh, people need to have somebody they can trust and be connected to.
Yeah.
So I want to really, really commend you for that process. Uh, and I don't care whether you sell it or not, basically. But I, but I am, I am very concerned. And I'm actually, this afternoon, will be making a presentation on at-risk students, uh, to the Senate Ed Committee. And I think I'm going to use you as an example of a positive way to make connections. And I appreciate that. You've given me inspiration and it will go further than here because it will also, you'll, you'll be a, you'll be a cited at the Senate Ed Committee this afternoon. And thank you for being here and thank you for what you do and thank you for stepping in. We fail at a hundred percent of the things that we do not try and it looks to me like you've got a pretty good record.
Jean Clifford.
I just wanted to thank you for coming and sharing this because not only, you know, are we gonna be able to take these ideas back to the districts that we represent, but there's, there's quite a few people who actually watch the video of this, um, meeting. So I'm sure there's people out there in, in the, uh, in Kansas and at the various districts who are thinking, maybe that's something that we could do at our district as well. And, and I really like the, the buddy system that, that you, um, brought to your school because I think that fits really very well into the social-emotional, uh, impact that we want to make with our students. We want people to be ready to learn and to do that. Um, they have to have, um, good social-emotional health, basically. And I think having a buddy, having a friend, especially an older friend who can kind of give you advice, but also is more of a peer than, and maybe not so intimidating to younger students. I think that means a lot. And, uh, these ideas can spread to, to so many other places that once you, you do it, you don't really know how many people you will have impacted. But you, you did at your school and I'm sure there are probably gonna be hundreds and thousands of other kids who will have that, uh, experience and be able to have guidance from older students. I really like the salad bar too, because I like salads a- as well. And I think, uh, from a physical health standpoint, they're, they're a good choice. So, um, I'm hoping that that will, uh, be something that other districts will, will consider having as well. And, uh, one of the, the best things is to show, uh, all of these other larger districts that even Western Kansas with its many small districts has some great ideas, uh, some great folks and some really, um, great students who are coming up with, um, things that will improve their lives and that can improve the lives of others in Kansas. So thank you so much for coming and thank you for, for bringing Avery and for supporting her in this endeavor. And I wish you the best of luck at K-State next year. I think it's gonna be a great experience. And I, I know that you'll make a big impact there too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for being here today. Uh, when you go off to college, you're gonna have some professors who are awesome and just are terrific. And you're gonna have some who are gonna be lame. Cause that's how the world is. So I'm guessing you've had pretty good support over the years, good family support, good school support. So without naming any names, I want you to go all the way back to kindergarten. Went to kindergarten, right?
Hmm.
Okay. So in your K through twelve experience, you had teachers who were pretty darn terrific. And you had some who were sort of in the middle. And you probably had one or two that may not have been so good. Again, no names, no names. But can you tell us, from your perspective, what made the great teachers great? And what made those who weren't so great, not so great?
Okay. So the great teachers, I feel like they listen and they give you time to just relax in their class and it's not always work, work, work. The other teachers that are really great, it is work, work, work. It's just, you have to find the even balance. And the lower on the scale teachers, um, I feel like they don't listen. They're there to teach, they're there to make money. They're not there for the students. That type of thing.
Jim.
Well, Avery, congratulations. Thank you for your presentation. It was a very good presentation and, uh, good luck at K-State.
Thank you.
Have a great time and get a great education. And they do, they can be mutually, uh, inclusive there. But I'm, enough's been said about the great things that you did right here. That, thank you for sharing. Uh, this is really important for us as a board, but for others to hear as well. Uh, testimonials from, uh, students and, uh, the folks that are in the field, uh, related to the Kansas-Kan vision. You know, how many years we've been doing this, Randy? This is third year we were in redesign, actually probably what, the fifth year that we've been doing this? And I guess it was like six years ago that I just found out Peggy's been with us for seven, you know, kind of a shocker. But, cause we all call it the new one. But, um, and, and I'm, I'm gonna deviate a little bit from your presentation to a board issue. We convened, um, over two thousand people, uh, students, businessmen, uh, and, uh, five years ago, six years ago, they told us what they wanted. We went back out and, and even went again and asked them, is this what you told us? Okay, when are we going to go back and find the Amys and the people of the world out there that are benefiting from what we've done? Uh, this is, she represents hundreds if not thousands of kids, represents the schools, but also the business community, you know, the, the, the higher ed people, you know? When we were in Wichita, we announced we were gonna do this, you know, at, at the K- at the KSD con- uh, conference. You know, we had business partners there, we had the Chamber, we had the Farm Zero, we had all these folks. When are we bringing them back? When do we, you know, yeah, uh, we had one of our friends here y- yesterday who said the numbers weren't on the test score. Well, you know, the Avories are, are really more important than a, than a test score. You know, but on the other hand, business and universities and, and the people we brought together five, six years ago, you know, when we made our big grand announcement. When are we reconvening them? When are we going to have business people at a Kansas-Kan, Kansas-Kan Business Conference? I don't know. You know, you, you sparked a thought in my mind as, as the testimonial you gave to the changes that are occurring within the schools in Oakley and Wichita and St. Francis and Chanute, you know, they're, they're there. But you know, we, we've got to get a bigger voice out there. And, and we've asked these people what they wanted and we're trying to give it now. Are, how do they feel? What, what, what's, what voice are they saying back? Thank you.
Yes, Jim, and I, I'm thinking that at our annual conference in twenty-twenty, that will be uh, five, five years from the announcement. You know, we've been thinking about that. If, I don't know if you'll remember, um, but I've been thinking about that since, since Avery and I had the time to meet. But there was a young lady who was, uh, in the Blue Valley School District and she was a singer. And if you remember, Ken Weller and I had dinner one night with her parents and her. And she, she, uh, I believe is living abroad right now, uh, but she had a recording contract. And we used her songs that she had recorded in Nashville at our event, uh, in October of twenty-fifteen. And I've been thinking that, uh, Avery's story, uh, the buddy system and the salad bar, especially the buddy system as we think about bullying and at-risk kids and that, along with some other voices, uh, of, of the student voice.
I don't want to interrupt you.
Can be prominent, uh, and.
But it's not just the buddy system, which is a great program, the persistence, project-based. You know, all of those things that, that are, are part of our vision.
Speaking in front of you today, right? The journey.
Civic engagement.
What is education getting her prepared to go to K-State, right? I mean, that's, that's what it's about. And having that be articulated by the students that are doing the work.
As part of the Kansas-Kan vision, we've encouraged schools to be open to these. You know, rather than closed. So there's been a change on our side as well. So we're gonna expect this next year, the conference? We're gonna have?
This year.
This year, rather, uh, yeah, yeah, that, that, next, yeah, this year.
Twenty-twenty.
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 Okay. Well, good. I look forward to that. That's, that's, that's great news. Thank you. Way ahead of me again.
Avery, as I, uh, spent most of my career working with middle school age students. So when you talked about middle school kids, I mean, certainly resonated with me because they, uh, one of the things that, you know, social-emotional growth and social-emotional learning is one of our bo- board goals. But also when you take a look at, at middle school kids, they, uh, you know, they're growing, they're changing. You know, you went through that not very long ago. And, um, so the fact that you're thinking about what, what can help. Because we ask our teachers to engage with students. We all know, as Mr. Roberts said, you know, some of them do that better than others. But to be able to have, uh, a high school student to help support those kids, cause it's, uh, you know, when you're that age, I, I, uh, the kids, uh, they can struggle a little bit. So, uh, I really do commend you as several of my board members have said that, uh, about coming up with the buddy system and making it work. Um, so when you went through this process of creating your buddy system and the salad bar, cause the first time you got turned down.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the second, so you persisted, your group persisted and you went back. So what are some things that you? you went back. So what are some things that you learned as far as creating these different, because they're, they're two very different things. Buddy systems, one thing, salads, bars, different. What are some things that you learned through that process of, of both things that you worked on? I mean, obviously with some of your high school colleagues, it sounded like you, you worked with the group. So what are some things that you learned from those two projects?
I learned that you can't do anything alone. You have to have somebody beside you, helping you. And I also learned that if you get, if somebody tells you no, just take it as it is and don't get super hurt by it. And if you, if it's something you're passionate about, try again.
And then as, as you went on, because particularly with the buddy system, you had to go up through the ranks, so to speak. Had to go support, report to the superintendent and then you had to go to the school board. So, you know, of course, there's some lessons learned in that.
Yeah, it was pretty much just learning chain of command and, which I already pretty much knew from another school organization. So I went to the, I went to some friends, thought what, got what they thought. And then to the teacher and then Ms. Everly and then the superintendent and so on.
A lot, a lot of good lessons learned there, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. So there are some of those lessons I'm assuming you're going to be able to take on to college.
I hope so.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I have no doubt that you will. Well, we do appreciate you coming today and sharing with us. And just so you know, the State Board has gone out to several areas of the state and had some meetings. We went to Southeast Kansas a couple of years ago. And this past year, we went Southwest Kansas. We were out in Garden City and Dayton. And well, this next year, we're coming to Northwest Kansas. So, yeah, we, yeah, we might be out in Oakley. So.
You'll be gone.
Yeah.
Mom will be there. So we, we're going to be coming up to Northwest Kansas and touring and kind of seeing a lot of the great things going on throughout the state. Cause there are, you're representative of some of those great things going on throughout the state. So just so you know, we'll be out your way, out west on I- so we're going to call it our I-70 tour, I think. Or maybe north and south of I-70 also. So, but again, thanks for coming today. We really appreciate it. Best of luck to you finishing the school year this year and then on up to Manhattan this next year as you head into post-secondary. But thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, we do want to have some photos. We're going to have all the board in our picture. And then after our picture board, we'll take a break. Okay, we've had two great student groups. Now we get to do policy? I mean, you know. No, it's, 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 it's always a real thrill to have the students here and get to listen to them and have the students from, from the School for the Deaf here and get to visit with them a little bit. And then they're going over to the legislature and then having a student from Western Kansas, from Oakley, Avery. So that was nice to listen to her and what she's doing out there in, in the Oakley School District. So it's great, great to hear those things. So we are going to, this is an action item today. This was presented last, last month. Deena presented this last month as the policy committee's been working on updating a few more of the policies. So if you want to look at the policies in your agenda item, board members, it does start on page 197. So Deena, I know you went through these last month, but you might have a few additional things to share today.
Actually, my, the things I would share would be, again, thanking my committee. They were wonderful, worked hard and found, we found some things, Janet, that we could change. But we had to look really hard. And I'd like to also thank Peggy for making the policy notebook in the future look very, very professional and dress it up with, with some color and et cetera. So it's really impressive, as impressive as policy can be. And as artsy as policy can be. And thanks to Mark for helping us with the legal side of, of the policy and guidelines as well. And for helping us find the correct numbers for the statutes. So anyway, with that, that may be an issue. Anyway, with that, unless there are questions or concerns.
Ben, do you have a question or?
No, I was going to make a motion.
Okay. Well, I think, Deena, are you going to make the motion?
That's what I was ready to.
Okay, please do so.
So I move that the Kansas State Board of Education adopt the recommendations of the board policy committee as presented for updating the policies and guidelines.
So we have a motion and Ben has a second. Ann is on the line. So do we have any questions? Anybody has? Okay, if not, we've had a motion and a second. So all in favor, please raise your hand. Ann?
Hi.
Okay, that's, looks like a 10-0. Thanks. I'll extend my thanks also to the policy committee. You guys really worked hard and appreciate the updates on this and bringing us a, a good, solid policy that's updated for, for the millennial, I think. You guys even went in and found those other statutes. So that's great. Okay, we are going to move on to agenda item eight. Agenda item eight is an update on the Kansas Educational Systems Accreditation Process and the work of the Accreditation Review Council. And so this is an information item, if I remember correctly. Check that real quick. Am I right, Peggy? Informational.
I, I just wondered if the guidelines were an attachment to the policies or if we need to vote separately on them?
The guidelines, Peggy?
The motion was the same. They, it was included in the motion.
The motion was for both.
Okay.
Okay. So I think we're good. But thank you for clarifying that. Okay, so we do have the update and Jeanette is here and it says that you will have handouts.
I'll move the handouts to the right. Those towards the end of the presentation when I speak specifically about the executive summary.
Great. Okay, thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Bush, members of the board and Commissioner Dr. Watson. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today on the update of KISA as well as the executive summary, which has been something that we have been talking about for a while this year from the Accreditation Review Council. Jim McNeese and Ann Ma attended one of our meetings, talked to them about the needs of really trying to improve a little bit on that executive summary. So I want to, at the end, kind of spend some time on how that has changed or revised anyway. So hopefully you get an executive summary that will provide you with information that will be more meaningful to you and that could help you with any questions later on that maybe the legislature would ask, et cetera. Okay. But before I start, I want to be able to introduce our new staff member, Stephanie Hill. I'm introducing her because we've been without staff for a very long time. So for me, this is like a big thing, right? Stephanie Hill, it will be our new consultant for accreditation. And we're very glad that David, he's back there. David is back from his extended leave. So we're happy that now we have a fairly complete team. So I'm feeling very confident, although we're still small, but mighty, right? So Stephanie comes to us, she's going to be one of our accreditation consultants, but she's going to work also primarily, or at least 50% of her time, with private schools. You know, we have a lot of private schools and special purpose schools that are, that are accredited. And for whatever reason, they're kind of a little bit unique in terms of the size and some of the things of how they operate. Some of them have other accreditation systems as well because they're, they come from either a Christian organization. And so trying to, you know, bring these things together is kind of hard. Also, many of our private schools, although we do have some public schools as well, are Cognia schools, which used to be Advanced Ed or NCA, depending how back you go, right? And Stephanie has worked very hard and long with Cognia as well. Stephanie comes to us from Baker University where she was working with continuing education, but before that she was a principal at, in Kansas City Diocese Schools. So, thanks, Stephanie. Okay, so with that then, let me just begin this brief update. I'm not going to really take very long with it. Okay. The first thing I want to just talk to you about is just what we focused on this year. We focused on training both the system as well as the outside visitation team, the chairs, really. The system evaluation this year focused primarily, primarily on how to evaluate the improvement process. This was important to end up doing from, from our standpoint, because as we have done school improvement in the state for a very long time, some continuous improvement, we know how to evaluate or at least take a look at information in terms of whether or not our improvement plan is in place and what they're doing. But to really talk about the impact of that on board, on the board goals and in other areas really has kind of been lacking a little bit. So we began talking about evaluating the improvement process for impact and success. And this was a kind of an eye-opener for many systems. They, I mean, we heard a lot from evaluations that they would have wished they would have had this first because they could have started with the end in mind kind of thing. So we're going to try to hit this pretty hard next year, primarily with all those systems that have just been accredited or that will be accredited. Those systems that even if they are accredited fully or conditionally, they'll go through this process as well so that they can begin looking at things with the end in mind and really evaluating the success of their improvement process. We also then worked with our outside visitation team. We gave them some logistical information because these OBT, outside visitation team trainings are really to bring new people in, also to become chairs. So we always do a logistical piece with them. And we also gave them information on evaluating the improvement process, not from the standpoint of them doing it necessarily, but how do they work with systems to help them understand the process that they need to go through. So we worked on that and then we continue on working on report writing. That's still a real big issue out there in terms of our reports and being able to provide things with reports that say as evidence by or giving us really good information on that. So we continue on doing that and it will probably continue next year as well. We have several KISA projects that are in the works for this coming year. These are continuing the work of the KISA and the redesign crosswalk. We had started that and we had to put a halt on it for a number of reasons. And so we are going to pick that back up. And my hope, I'm not promising anything, but my hope is to have it at least finished by December so that by the time 2022 comes around, we'll already have a document that really shows how KISA and the redesigned principles really work together and where you find them and everything. So that's going to be very good. The other thing that we're working on is really identifying success criteria for the foundational structures. We talk about foundational structures, but we haven't quite defined necessarily what they mean in, in, as a whole. So if, so we want to be able to put something together so that school districts, systems will be able to say, okay, I have a tiered framework of support. Is my tiered framework of, of support one that's going to be making a difference? We did a, I, I talk about the 20% review that we did last year. And what we found was when systems talked about their tiered system of support or their tiered framework of support, sometimes it was just a class. It wasn't really a framework per se. And so there's a lot of learning sometimes that needs to go out there. And we're hoping that with the success criteria, we'll end up doing that. The other piece for the success criteria is that we have as one of the foundational structures, diversity and equity. And that is a hard one to end up defining. And so we want to be able to try to define that and say, okay, this is what we mean by diversity and equity in schools and having that as a foundational structure. Okay. Remember that our foundational structures are just those things that should be in place in any school. Okay. You think about it as the floor of a, of a house or a building or of a soccer field. If you want to heat it up, now you've improved it, right? You've gone, taken it a little bit further. But otherwise, there's some things that you just have to have. I don't want to call them minimals because that's not really what it is. It's a foundation. Okay. It's, without this foundation, it doesn't work. So the next thing is the regulations guidance document. The board approved that in February to go through the Department of Administration on over again. And so now that we have a document that's kind of well-rounded, if you will, we want the advisory, Accreditation Advisory Council to begin looking at that with some, and help us provide and develop a guidance document so that when the regulations finally get approved, we'll have that guidance document ready to go to the field or at least only with some tweaks that have to happen as a result of any changes that might have taken place. The other one is the review of the KISA reports. And this comes directly from the whole, the entire work from doing the executive summary. We, as you know, when KISA was, was, began, we really didn't have all the other pieces like at the end of what was going to happen. We just knew the beginnings, the visit, what we wanted to do. So many of these reports were developed with what we knew at that time. Now that we have gone through two years of trying to accredit schools, of developing an accreditation criteria, of looking at some things, we want to be able to take that executive summary and kind of backward map some of these KISA reports so that the, so that the OBT chair could understand how to write their report because they're really not only writing for the system, you know, to give them feedback and advice, but they're also writing so that the Accreditation Review Council, the ARC, when they look at these reports, they can understand and see and be able to answer their questions without really having to dig so deeply into all this information. So the, the more tight that we put those reports, the better for the end result. And so then from there, we wanted then take a look at the OBT summary report and then see what needs to be placed within the system report. Other than, we already know that the board goes, they have to respond on the board goes, they have to respond on the, you know, successful high school graduate and many of those things. But how do we rephrase those questions now that we know a little bit better? Questions right now are a little up in the air, too, too big, I guess. So that's one of the other processes that we hope will finish by the end of next year. Accreditation review, recommendation review in 2022, we've been working on that. You know, 2022 is our big year. So the ARC has been talking about, the Accreditation Review Council has been talking about that in terms of how they're going to proceed. And we have brought it to the Accreditation Advisory Council because one of the things that was recommended in our discussions was maybe the Accreditation Advisory Council, which are about 28 members, right, could pair up with maybe an ARC member who will still serve as the lead, but then help review some of these systems early on. So we're, we're working right now in a process to help that done. Next year, if, our thought is that if next year we can do about 69 of those by the ARC, that then the next group that comes in, it'll be that much easier and refined so that when the Accreditation Advisory Council comes in to support, that then the 220, 218, 200, will be a lot easier. Okay. Cross our fingers. Our KISA guidance document, that is up there right now. We know that there- We know that there needs to be changes. We have changed some reports, and so we have updated that. We still want to take a look at it again, and see if it still falls in line with where the agency is really going, how much of it. We've tried to put in information about redesign, and the redesign principles, and many of these other things, but we've added it. So now we really need to go through and look at it as, how well does it flow, I guess? And take a look at that. We will, once again, do our 20% report reviews. We do a random sample of the reviews at the end of this year. We'll go through them, see how the reports were written, whether or not they gave the appropriate information, try to identify what needs might be, and then give information back to the field on that. We give to the Advisory Council, we give it to the Accreditation Review Council, and they're able to then also give us feedback from what they have seen. And then we're looking at trying to do an OBT report writing rubric. Similar, many of you, if you've been in the state, you remember the six straight writing. You know, you would give that, students would know what was expected of them. They could have something to look at what their work was, right? To see what they were going to be judged, you know, judged on, if you will. We figured if we did some type of report writing rubric, maybe that would help with that whole report writing that keeps on coming up from the field. I need, how do I write this report? What is it that you want? So we're going to tackle that as well. Any questions about any of that?
Jim McNeese has a question.
It's not so much a question, but a reflection when Jeanette's done with her presentation.
Okay, so you're going to come back to you?
Yeah.
Okay. These are the number of systems that are being accredited throughout the few years. I, it's hard to see. Yeah. The first two lines that are grayed out are those that have already have gone through the system, and then so those two gray lines are reflected in the bottom chart, because those are the ones that then will be accredited in 2022, 2023, and 2023 and 2024, respectively. So we will have a total of seven systems coming through in 2022, 2023, and then 21 in 23, 24. So a total of 28 have been accredited so far, and will, are currently on their second review cycle. This year, we have 29 systems being accredited. One of our systems decided to move back a year, and we gave them still that option. We just told them that that option was now, not when it came to the ARC, that they had to make those decisions ahead of time. And so we had one system that decided that, and we had one system actually that decided to move up, just based on where they were. They're a new superintendent in a school district, and they just wanted to be able to finish whatever process they had now, so that they can really start fresh with her and as a superintendent there. So we have 29 coming through. 14 of those are public. We have 15 that are private and special purpose schools. So 14 of those are private schools, the Kansas City Arcadiocese, and then one of them is a special purpose school, which is Hart Spring. And of the 14 public systems, actually, there's one, which is a state school for the deaf, that just went accredited. And so we'll be bringing that to you as well. So that's the way that looks. We still have 69 for next year, that changes that. And then we have 232 for 21, 22. Of those, 201 are public, and 31 are private systems. Any questions on that?
Don't see any.
Okay. If not...
Yes, I do.
Okay.
It's a mathematical question, and a mathematical person just left. Okay, 2017, 18, we started with eight total systems, and we're on a cycle. So we're going to come back, we're going to do 201, 232, and 21, 22, and then 22, 23. We're back to 11?
Yes. Yes. However, yes.
We're going to reprieve?
However, I should say that I do have a meeting with Randy on the 16th to talk about, a little bit about that.
Right. Obviously, from your report, and from the things we're talking about, it's been a blessing to ease into this.
Absolutely.
We are better in this conversation today than we were three years ago when we first started. And thank you for your leadership on that.
Thank you.
Okay. At the same time, we've got, we're flipping it now, so we go from 200 and some to 11.
Right.
Okay. How do we, I'll let you and Randy meet and decide how we change that.
Yeah. I scheduled a meeting with Randy, because I thought, I mean, this has been an issue for many, and as we go into that new, the second review of KISA, second cycle of review, how do we try to even that out at this point in time? So that it could flow a little bit, flow a little bit better?
It's helped us to create this new system of accreditation. And as we morph the KISA into redesign, you know, that all has to fit together.
Right.
You know, so, yeah. I'll be interested to see what plan you come up with. Thank you. I didn't want to do that, man.
It is, it is a question that we have had, so we've been thinking about it, or I've been thinking about it anyway, in terms of that.
You got to kill a year, and then you don't have anything to do the next year.
Well, no, there'll still be plenty, I bet you do. I'm sure that there will be, but, yeah, it might not look that way, but there are always, just as the process for schools is a continuous improvement cycle, it is also for us.
And we have to be able to communicate those changes at least two years before we do it, so it's kind of sitting there.
Right.
Thank you.
Other questions, board members, at this time? I'd say, go ahead, Jeanette.
Okay, so that's the end of the actual update, unless you have other questions to really ask about anything that we've been doing with KISA.
I do, the question I have is, of those ones coming this year, when, when do we expect to see them?
So we, the Accreditation Review Council will be reviewing their first set of systems, which will be the public systems that are ready, and we're hoping that it would be most of those in April. We have two days in April that they're coming in. They have about 30 days to respond, the system does, to respond to their accreditation recommendation. And so we could bring you some, some systems as early as May. The question then is whether or not the ARC would want to hold all recommendations at this point, to then come in July, because then we meet again in June to review all the private systems that are using Cognia specifically to be accredited. So we could have the first set in May, and then have another set in July.
I would guess the Board would kind of like to split it, just because of workload for us.
Okay.
Kind of get a head nod on that, or? I mean, I'm sure there's reasons maybe you wouldn't want to, but I think that, for us, that would make sense.
Okay.
Are they okay with that? Okay. Yeah, I just was kind of wondering the timeline. I mean, even though it's 29, that's a lot more than what we've done.
Right.
Recently. Getting us geared up for that big year.
Right. Well, and I am sure that probably, as you take a look at the reports and things like that, there might be some additional changes that need to take place, but it'll give us some time to maybe look at and see. I'm hoping that what I will show you next will, will provide, you'll be able to provide us some input if we are on the right track, or if we need to make some additional changes, or edits, or whatever, in terms of the report.
Great, thank you. So is this one, we need to get this executive summary document out?
That, yes.
Can everybody find that in your stuff?
So before then I begin, I want to just bring you to light to the one executive summary that says 2018, 19 on the top. Actually, it's the one from DO 115. This was the actually, District USC 115. This was actually the report that you received last year. So this is the way it looked, and I wanted to be able to give you that, so that then you can have a comparison of what you had last year with what you will be receiving this year. In order to, or before I go into the actual document that you are going to be receiving, I got to make sure that I know how to get into this. This is our test site, as you can see. I'm going in as an ARC member, okay? Because what I wanted you to be able to see is what the ARC will be doing. This is what the ARC sees. The ARC has access to every report of any system, okay? Down here where it says ARC reports, they can go into any system and take a look at their reports. This is similar to what you can see if you go in with your own board login. From there, for their purposes, they're going to go into accreditation, because that's what they're doing. This is a dummy account, okay? So it's a test, so don't worry about what it says here in terms of status and things. The system is set, huh? Oh, okay. So this is, can be filtered by year of accreditation. So we can get all the systems that are being accredited that year, and it can come up for the ARC. The reason that we do that is so that the ARC can know ahead of time, a year before, or two years before, who's coming in, and they could start reviewing their reports if they want to. They don't have to wait on the year of accreditation to do that, and they do know that. So the first, the first line here is the system number. The second one is the system name, the building number. This is the recommendation that the ARC is doing for accreditation. And then this is the status as to where that report is at the time. And then, of course, the completion year, and then the executive summary. So I'm just going to go into one that's in progress right now. Which one do I want? Let's do this one. When the ARC comes in, they'll go into the executive summary for the school district that they are working on. And this is what they see. In the past, they would see the actual report, the way it was here. Now, they're working on every question separately, okay? In order to then develop the report for you. So there are 10 areas that they need to respond to. The first one is compliance, okay? And so then they talk about whether or not they are not in compliance, generally in compliance, or assuredly in compliance, okay? Assuredly would be pretty much that they're in compliance with everything. I would probably say that generally is they are in compliance, but there might be some areas that they're working on. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
How about that? Everybody can see that?
Thank you. Thank you. I should have known how to do that, but I can't see either, so. Okay, so question one, again, is about compliance. They'll talk about, they'll make some statement about compliance. If there's any areas that they need to work on, if they feel they need to work on, they'll call it an area for improvement. And I want to remind you as a Board that there could be areas of improvement, even if the system is recommended for accreditation. Okay? So in this case, we, this is just a dummy information. We're saying, okay, you need to, an area improvement is for professional development, and you don't have a plan on file, but you have called us, and we know that you're working on it. So we give you until 6:30 of 2020 to send it to us.
I have a question on compliance.
Uh huh.
Because a number of our regulation items are covered here, I believe, like, do you have a bullying plan?
Correct.
Or do you have this or that? Do you know, and you may not know this, and you may want to get back, be able to get back to us, how many compliance areas are there?
We have about 14 or 15 compliance areas.
So will it identify what they're not in compliance in?
Yes. Yes.
All right.
So that, that is the intent. If they end up here deciding... Okay, now I can't get to... I can't find it. All the way in the bottom here it goes, okay. So in this case, this would probably be more explicit than it is here. I think in the report that I gave you, it is a little bit more explicit, because this was a test site. So then we talk about here professional development, where we say the system does not have an approved professional development plan, which is an area of compliance. And then what they need to do, which the system needs to complete their PDC plan and submit it for review, or for approval, and then we give them a date.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Once that's completed, they either save it, or just hit next, and it'll automatically save. If they make any edits and they go back, they definitely have to hit save to it. So then they talk about the foundational areas, and whether they are assuredly addressed. I should end up saying, at this point in time, that the accreditation criteria is right here, in terms of compliance. And so when you say, here are the areas of compliance. So when the Board is taking, so when the ARC is taking a look at this, they come here, and they say, these are the areas of compliance. One of the things that we have been doing, and that we have started this year, is we used to ask the system in itself, are you in compliance? And some of them would say yes. And what we found was, when we went to accredit some schools last year, that they were missing some things. And so then we had to go back to the system and say, hey, we don't have this, and it's a compliance issue. Well, that was really bad, because we already knew that, pretty much. I mean, it was really bad to have them wait that long and then find out. So we are currently working, and we're hoping to having it finished by the end of this month, is that compliance is going to be done internally. Okay? So we're looking at compliance, we have all the information, so why make the school district really address it? What we want the school district to address, if there's anything that within compliance, any team of these that are working on these areas here that are, because these are the identified KISA compliance areas, okay? You'll notice that auditing and finance is not in there. And part of that is because, yes, their reports will need to be done in time, because otherwise, we don't get some of this information here. But if, but they make sure they're in compliance, otherwise money is taken from them, what withheld, or those kind of things. So, I mean, when we asked them, what you want us to check, they said, we check on it already. If it's not there, they know way ahead of time. So we said, okay, so let's check on those things that maybe they don't get any feedback from. And so that's why we have these as the areas of compliance. So the ARC can, at any point in time, just go back and take a look, and keep this actually accreditation criteria open for, as they review, then go through their questions. They go through the foundational areas. Again, they can go over to the accreditation criteria, and then they see where the foundational structures are, and they have their statements in terms of what, what means assuredly, what means generally, and what means lacking of, so that they can make a decision based on their reviews. So then they answer the question, of course, and if they, any area for improvement that they find, they will add it here. Then they go into relation, the goal. And in this case, the goal one is relationships. We have asked, they know, because you have asked, to make sure that within their statements, they are able to write what the actual goal is, in terms of what their statement is. And so they will do that. And so they work on this, and they respond on this. The second one is goal two, the same thing. Goal five... Goal five, or question five, is regarding their policies and procedures that they have in place for long-term sustainability of their work. Again, you can always go back to the rubric to see this. The question number six is demonstrating gains and meeting the expectations of the Kansas Vision for Education and State Board outcomes. And in this case, we didn't have this before. It was a general question, so sometimes, specific information on every single board item, board outcome was not written. Don't worry about what it says here, because that's just so that we can continue on. But they know that they're supposed to write on each one of these what they see and what the schools have, or the systems have. Seven is about stakeholder engagement. Eight is on the leadership of, and responsiveness of the outside. This is part of process, actually, this eight. And nine is, of course, process in terms of fidelity to the process in itself. We learned a lot with our evaluation piece about the importance of fidelity of implementation, if you're gonna really, so this is, this comes as a critical area. Every, every question has an AFI area that can be added to it, if need be. Then, as I save, and it goes to question 10, this is where they make their recommendation. They make the recommendation, they give a justification, they indicate strengths and challenges for it, and then they submit the summary. I'm not submitting anything at this point, because then I can't go back to this later if I need to play with it. But once it comes into, they submit it. I'll come back over here. I'll go to this one, because this one is already supposedly submitted. No, it's not. Get back. It's not submitted yet. This is our test stuff, so don't, I mean, don't look at that and go, nice, what, you know? Okay, I'll do, I'll do this one. You'll see that this has an 11 on here. The 11 is the accreditation recommendation, what has been done. And by this time, then we would have it ready to print out and to have for you as, as a board. If I go to this accreditation piece here, we would be able to write, to then complete a PDF of all of the systems that are coming up for accreditation, once the system has gone and indicated that it is okay, that they accept the recommendation. So what happens after the ARC submits, it comes to me. I check, and I check for grammar, which is really interesting from an ELL person checking it, but, you know. But I check for grammar, and, and, you know, make sure that the its and the twos and all that kind of stuff, at least that it makes sense for you. And then I send it over to the system, and they, and they get a notification saying, an email saying, your accreditation recommendation has been received. Please go into the KISA system and accept or appeal, okay? Because they have the choice to appeal.
When they get to that point, and they get the accreditation notification, I assume goes to the superintendent?
Correct. It'll go to the superintendent, if that superintendent is not the identified contact person in our KISA application. So we go through the KISA application, and then our KISA application is taken with the education directory to make sure that the superintendent is the same one. If they don't match, then we CC the superintendent as well in it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, at what point does it go to their local Board of Education?
They should take that to the board. That's why we give them about, we give them some time to reflect on it. So hopefully, they would take it to the board within the next, before they accept or, or appeal, I guess.
Is there a requirement that they take it to their local board?
There's not a requirement to take it to the local board at that time. There is a requirement to report to their local board on the progress of their accreditation process.
Other questions, board members? Okay, Janet Law and then Jim McNeese.
What happens if they do not report to their board on the process?
Well, it is one of our regulations. So at this point in time, we have not been really keeping track of a lot of those pieces. So, I mean, there really isn't much, we don't have much to really stand on unless I know anything different on what we can do with them. We'll just continue reminding them that it is one of our regulations, and that it's their responsibility to be able to give their local board progress on their accreditation on a yearly basis. So when we do our, our system, our, our system trainings, those are pieces that we try to reiterate to them through the systems training. I don't have a way to hold them to the fire, though.
My understanding, the minimum of one district in my area has not complied. Jim McNeese?
Well, speaking directly to that compliance issue, there's an ethical responsibility upon the administration and the teams. They should've been a team. There should've been involvement in the community. There should've been a lot of dialogue that went on over the years to do this. And one of the things we don't want them to do is put the report on the, in the shelf and close the closet door. I appreciate Janet bringing up that there may be a district that she's aware of, you know. Boy, I can't imagine you getting away with that anymore.
Yeah.
Now, my question is, is similarly, but this information that's online here that we're looking at right now, who can access that?
The ARC, the ARC is the only one that can access this piece.
So we can't access that, or can we, under our?
You will be able to access the reports once they're completed.
Okay.
Once they're completed, you'll be able to access the ARC report, because it would be listed on... In, in your login, it won't say ARC reports. I think it says district reports, probably. And when you go there, then you should be able to see, see where it says up here, building status, completion of the initial report, final year. If I move that down, then you have accreditation summary, okay? And so, for instance, this one here, as a 2023, it shows it there. This was just a test, of course, to see if it does actually show up. So once they have finished their report, and it's an accreditation, and the, they have approved it, saying, yes, we accept it, it automatically comes on here. So really, if you want it to, you don't really have to wait into the board meeting to read that report. You can read it ahead of time.
Sure. Yeah. I'm sure there are many board members who'd like to look at their districts and see how it's going.
Yeah.
You know. The appeal process, what is the appeal process?
So the regulation right now reads that any school district can appeal their decision...
Decision, their decision.
The recommendation, the recommendation of accreditation status.
By the ARC.
By the ARC, yes. And so...
So if I'm conditionally accredited?
So if you're recommended for conditionally accredited.
And you'll, if you're conditionally accredited, if that's the recommendation from the ARC, will the district have a, a time that it's not publicized, but they have the opportunity to correct?
They have 15 days to create an appeal, once they receive the report. And then after that, the, the, they have to write, there's a section in there to write what their appeal is or what they're appealing. And then we take that back to the ARC first, to see if the ARC in any way sees the information. They can also, if the ARC said, because the ARC would say, have areas for improvement for them. And so they can say, oh, no, no, don't tell me I'm not accredited, let's put it that way, with a compliance issue. I have the documentation. They can come into here, the artifacts section, do an appeal, and then indicate that they have updated some article for appeal, that the ARC could take a look at, okay? So then the ARC can go back in and say, okay, let's take a look at this. If they still feel that it is an appeal recommendation, they will let them know, and then I will, we will contact the commissioner, because it does say that the commissioner would put an appeal team together. And so if the ARC still says that, and then we would probably put an appeal team together. But if the final decision is still that they should be conditionally accredited, once they appeal, that's kind of their, that appeal is, is it. They get to appeal kind of once, if you will. And so if decision is still to stay, then it comes to you. Now, as a board, we, the ARC could recommend conditionally accreditation. And as a board, you can say, no, I know that these things are going on, or they're doing great, or, you know, their results are well, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and accredit them. Because you, the decision is yours. What the ARC brings to you is not the final decision. Yours is the final decision. By the same token, we can accredit a school, and you can say, well, I'm not sure that this system, not school system, that this system should be accredited. We want to recommend, we want to put them as conditionally accredited. You can do that as well. And you can really do that at any point in time through this process.
So what would be a reason that we would conditionally accredit outside of the foundation area? Those 14 or so.
That, there could be various. I mean, data not improving. You've had five years of, of data, and it has not improved, and your process doesn't indicate that you even know what's going on?
So taking point one, your, your data has not improved. Your, your, let's just say that your, your reading scores have shown inconsistent results going down.
And you can't...
That would be a reason to conditionally accredit.
It could be. It could be, absolutely. Your data is not showing. And I think even, or, or you could even say, okay, this...
How about success rate?
Exactly, post-secondary. So any of the board outcomes. So remember...
Yes, kindergarten readiness.
Kindergarten readiness, social-emotional, post-graduation, any of those could be areas.
Could it be, and I hate to do this.
Jim, we've got another question, and then we can come back to you.
No, I bet you might want to leave me.
Jean Clifford.
I just had a couple of quick questions. On the filtering, you had mentioned that you can filter by, by year. Can, can we also filter by state board district to just look at our?
No, but I could write that down as a...
That would be really helpful. And along those same lines, you had mentioned that the, the final recommendation, I assume the ARC recommendations and those things will be emailed to the superintendent. Can that be also copied to that per, that district's state board member, so that we kind of are keeping up with how they're going along?
It can, yeah, absolutely.
I think that would be really helpful for me and for a lot of us who have a lot of districts.
Going to Janet, we also could, could copy that report to the school board president, local school board president. And that way, you have three, three people that have been copied on that.
I think we can go ahead and add that. We have that information in our educational directories, who the school board president is. So as long as that's updated, we could just send it to them as well and CC them. It's just, it's a, I, application in a workings, which I don't know anything about, but they can do it, because they do it now, so.
Yeah, from my perspective, having the information on the ARC recommendation, of whether there's an appeal, or if there's an appeal, and then the final recommendation would be very helpful.
Janet Law.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand if they're conditionally accredited, they have an opportunity to correct it. That's what we, what happens if they're not accredited? Not accreditation?
Well, then, if, if it comes to you as a non-accredited, there's only really, I mean, there's a variety of reasons for them not to be accredited. But one of the reasons that it's kind of like an automatic not accreditation is not being in compliance, and not showing any progress or working towards compliance. So assuming that that would be one of the reasons for it, what our regulations end up saying is that if a school district is not in compliance, they have a list of things that kind of takes place. And it would be up to the board to, I guess, make a decision on what sanction they want to put in place for the system.
Say the board, you mean this board?
This board.
Not the local board.
Right, the State Board of Education, correct. Because it's your accreditation, and if you say they're not accredited, then there's either sanctions. Either the public school has to close, because we're talking about an entire district, really, or you indicate some sanctions that they need to work on specifically. And those sanctions would probably come directly from you.
Okay, Anne Mall has a question. Anne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Jeanette, I just want to thank you and the team for all this work, and just amazing amount of work done. I'm looking at the accreditation criteria rubric that you gave us that was dated November 26, 19, that had to eight areas. Is that still a current document?
No, the current document is the one that was placed on the website in January. So there's an updated accreditation rubric on the website currently.
But we can get that if we go into the area you're looking at, we can see all that?
If you go into the KSDE website, and you go into popular topics and go to accreditation, when you click accreditation, the first thing that comes up is the guidance document, and right below the guidance document is the accreditation criteria.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I should say, that's still a work in progress. You know, they, they worked on it the first year, they kind of used it, they worked on it again the second year, they used some of it, they refined it. So this will be the first year that they're actually with this refinement that they're putting into place, and take a look at how it works. So it might be that they see some things that need to be adjusted as well. So continuously improving, I guess.
Jim McNeese?
Sure you want, sure you want me to go?
You got another two?
First of all, for the superintendents and school board members and principals and staff that may be listening in, you know, a lot of our questions have dealt with non-compliance and conditional accreditation or not accredited. This process is not a gotcha process, first of all. So to lower their level of concern, we're asking these questions because this is an accountability process at its heart as well. And accountability can challenge us, you know, and hopefully, the KISA model that we have will challenge us to be better, not catch us at something we're not doing. So, you know, I, I want to applaud, Jeanette, you and your team have done a really nice job from where we were a year and a half ago, to where we are today. You've done a really good job.
Thank you.
And outlining this. And, but it's good for the board to know, and it's good for the folks to know out there, that conditional accreditation or non-accreditation could be a reality, because we do have higher standards today than we've ever had in the past. And it's our obligation to make sure we, we stick by those high standards and challenge our districts, you know, to, to basically move forward to the, the needs of the kids. And that's what it's all about. It's not about losing your accreditation.
That's right.
It's about making sure we're meeting the needs of the students, you know, meeting our vision. So thank you.
And progress is important. I mean, you gave the example of people's data may not quite be where it needs to be. But if they have a good strategic plan, they have a process in place, and they're making improvement, they're gonna be okay.
And they understand. And they understand, and they understand. I mean, they can have an improvement plan in place and not understand why their scores are not improving. So that whole conversation of, and that's where the evaluation piece becomes so critical. Cause if they're evaluating it, then they should be able to explain, this is not working because of X, Y, Z.
Okay, so board members, I'm going to kind of explain or attempt to, probably with Randy's help, a little timeline. So in May, we should get, for the May meeting, we'll have, uh, probably the batch of public schools.
Correct.
Okay, so in order to do that, we may need to know, have a refresher on how to get into this system.
Yeah.
So we really won't have time in April to do that. Cause we'll be over in Kansas City at the School for the Deaf and School for the Blind one day. So I think what we'll do, Randy and I had a little sidebar over here. We'll have, uh, Peggy set something up and then we'll have like an optional virtual session that we can, and Jeanette will probably be there, but that we can get into our ARC. And so we've got a, I have no clue where my password is. So we may need, I may be the only person like that. So one or two others maybe.
We'll make sure that at least your usernames are available to you so that then, cause really if you remember your username, then you can just reset your password.
Okay.
So, um, but we can go through that at that point in time. And resetting your password really happens quickly and we'll make sure that, um, Karen from our IT team is available on whatever that day is that we choose so that she knows that this is happening. And if she needs to approve things quickly, she can end up doing that. What I would remind you is, is April is the month for, and I have to remind our, our ARC as well. Um, April is the month to renew your, um, data security training. And so, um.
So we'll get an email about that.
Huh? I know, I know. I tried to see, can't you do it in May or do you like at the end? Cause I have the ARC coming in and they need to do it too.
Right, right.
Um, so just giving you because.
That's good warning.
They, they end up saying, no, they haven't done their security training. I'm sorry, we can't give them the.
Okay. So when you get the email about your security training, if you're gonna participate in the virtual stuff.
Sorry for the bad news. However, Stephanie just finished doing it. It wasn't all that bad, was it?
Sophie, you do it for me?
Yeah, she did it now, cause she started like now in March and in April she has to repeat it.
Okay.
So.
So we'll, we'll have that opportunity for folks, uh, before we actually have to get online and read these. We do have had a couple more questions pop up. Ben Jones?
You got on the timeline and I completely forgot what my question was, but it came up when you were talking about previously to the timeline. I don't remember what it was.
Well, we can come back to you.
Yeah, if it comes back.
If it comes back, okay. Janet Waugh. Oh, Jim Porter. Janet Waugh for Jim Porter.
Well, thank you. She has to take care of me.
I do it.
One of the things that I've admired since coming to Kansas about the Kansas Department of Education is that, like Jim said, this is not a gotcha process. There are, correct me if I'm wrong, there are multiple opportunities to develop improvement plans before you get to the accreditation process.
Absolutely.
Uh, and so if somebody is not accredited or conditionally accredited, it likely is because they have not taken the process seriously and have had numerous opportunities to correct you before it gets to that point. Is that a correct statement?
Right, now remember, it's about process and results. So it's a little bit about both. And the first couple of years, I think we did kind of accredit more on process uh, because we didn't have all of the, the, um, state board accountability things firmed up. I mean, they were there, but we were still adjusting. Um, and so this year, it will be on results and process. It's going to be on both. You have to be showing results, uh, that you're improving in some way or that you understand why your data looks the way it looks and that you have things in place in order to improve that.
And you have multiple opportunities to correct that prior to the actual date of the.
Absolutely. That's why we have yearly visits so that the, um, OBT chairs and their team can be giving them that information. The OVTs, uh, does, do have access to all this information as well. They'll have, they'll have access to the compliance pieces to know to ask those questions. So will the system have, uh, information on their compliance pieces to know that system? And we try to take a look at things as well. So, um, last year I went through a number of reports, uh, and Randy provides us information on when he does his data thing, uh, with the, he gives us information and we contact school districts and say, hey, these, these things, we're concerned because of these things. And we'll try to go and visit, um, as well.
Thank you.
So for example, and I think Jim and Jim, this will hit part of this. So, cause we look at, we look at those data indicators on the board outcomes as it relates to, uh, recognition. What we've also done is look and I'll use, you mentioned test score, so let's just use that, one of the eight measures. So the state average of having students at, in all areas at, at level three and four is about thirty-four percent. So we took who's significantly off of that, below twenty-four percent. And then who's significantly below, you know, seventy percent are below in graduation. Who's significantly below, has no process in SEL? Who's significantly below? And ran that, and I just said to Jeanette and Michelle, here are districts that are significantly low in every area. You wanna make sure they have a really good process and know about that. Because it's not a little bit, they're, in, in every area, they're, they're really low. And so that's just how the data and the process are gonna work together. So you could not have great data, but it could be, well, we, we've acknowledged that, here's our plan. We're gonna monitor that and, you know, we're gonna go forward. That could still get you accredited or maybe conditionally with a watch.
Right.
I mean, it could be either. But you, if you have really poor data and you say, we didn't know we were supposed to do that or we don't have a plan for that, that becomes problematic. Because our state isn't looking at some letter grade number that just triggers the, the process. Many other states, it's just cut and dry. Our, our state says, no, this is your school improvement process and all we're trying to do is validate it.
Right.
That.
That's very hard.
Jim, you mentioned Missouri and, and, you know, every state's different. Well, no, every state is different, but Missouri has a rubric that's, that, you know, you, you score certain, it gets weighted certain things. Texas has a whole completely different system.
A checklist that they come into.
And so it's, it's, I think for people to understand, Kansas system is based upon you doing the work that your community feels is important relative to the state board outcomes. Hope that is helpful.
Right.
Couple more questions. Ben Jones?
It came to me.
All right.
I know, it's a miracle. And it's, it's, it's tailoring off of the results piece. Cause I mean, before, we haven't had those numbers. Um, when we look at them, the ARC is talking about it. So if a school has had decreased results, I mean, I don't, it's hard to speculate what the ARC would do, I guess. But, um, is, well, we start seeing those things in the, in the, in the reports about this is the data to back this up. These are the numbers. We're concerned about this data because, you know, the, the amount of civic engagement is decreasing in this district. There, the students are not participating at a level they once were or, uh, you know, kindergarten readiness and, and those things. And it, and it's the results piece and, and my concern, and we have a new system. I don't know how we balance it, but is it, is it relative to the, the graduation rates? And I know you just touched on it a little bit, Randy, but I guess I just need more of a, an in-depth look for me personally, because I don't know exactly what our results numbers are as a state board member. And that would be a really lengthy conversation that I know the chair doesn't wanna have at this point. But, um, that's, that's info that I would like.
I, I think in general, I think one area you can look to that will kind of give you an indication of what I think will, your PDC. You have a PDC, uh, professional, or, uh, recommendations that Linda brings to you. You have a group of people, professional, uh, development, uh, committee, uh, uh, group that looks through on licensure and says yea or nay and gives you a recommendation. And then you have the right to say, well, I don't like that, but they, they, they do that. Um, so when Linda comes before you, uh, every month with the recommendations that she brings on, on professional practice commission, I'm sorry, I said PDC, um, then those are just recommendations to you with evidence of why they did it. And you act, ask her questions oftentimes about, what did you see? And then you vote. I look for that to be somewhat similar. You have an accreditation review council that's made up of practitioners that review each one of those. You have, you have a, even before that, you have an OBT chair and you have teams locally. They're trying to take it to a process. Service centers usually are heavily involved with that or Cognia used to be advanced dead. But at the end of the day, you're gonna look at this and go, well, tell me why they did this. And Jeanette or someone on behalf of that will walk you through that. And then you will say, we support the recommendation or we wanna go in different direction.
I will end up also letting you know, I'm sorry, um, that, um, you will also receive, even though it's accessible to you, a, a copy of the account, one-page accountability report uh, for every district along with the report when it comes to you.
So the documents we'll get will be this executive summary and the one-page accountability.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Um, the ARC also receives this from every district and this is kind of the first thing they take a look at. And then they go back in and, uh, take a look at the report in terms of writing it and their goals and, and to see whether or not there's anywhere that they can find either justification for what the results are telling them and in terms of the plan.
Steve Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I understand that this is an important and integral process to everything. Money flows from the federal government to accredited schools. There are innumerable reasons why we do this. The one thing that really troubled me more than anything else, and a lot of this troubles me. I come from this thing, I hit this from a whole nother direction. And I don't think accreditation is a really good use for our time and talent, but that's, that's me. I understand we have to do this because here we are. But Jeanette, you said that as long as they're working toward improvement, the system is, is sort of slanted to, to allow for accreditation as long as they're working toward it. As long as they're working toward improvement. That's, that's what I heard. Whether or not that's what you said, that's what I heard. And I think the difficulty with that is, it's sort of like the road to hell is paved with good intentions. We can always, no matter how bad the situation is, say, well, we're working to get better. And that's why we have thirty percent of our kids who can't do arithmetic, according to the State Supreme Court. And I concur. So at some point, we have to draw the line. I probably won't be here when we draw that line. But I just wanna convey the, the importance of drawing these lines and saying, there's gonna be a comeuppance. Somebody's gonna lose their job. Some school's gonna close. Some teacher's gonna get fired. Some superintendent's gonna be reprimanded. There have to be consequences and that's, that's the only thing I have to say at this point. I, I wanna ask, one more thing. I do appreciate the, the hard work that goes into this. I know it's a, it's a Herculean task. I don't mean to diminish that at all. Thank you, Jeanette.
Thank you.
Okay, well, Jeanette, yes, please.
Okay, so the second document, sorry, I don't want you to end up leaving thinking that this is what you're gonna receive again. Okay, the second document is what you're going to receive. It is not gonna be a one-page, as you can see. Um, if we're going to add more information and give, uh, more detail to the report, it will be a little bit longer. Um, but it is still the same questions. It's just the way that it has been written. We have, uh, made sure that, um, all the comments were there. And then if there is any area of, um, recommendations for improvement, they will be listed right underneath with the timeline. And we also have a separate document, uh, that just lists all of the areas for improvement for any system that becomes accredited for the, so that they could know what it is that they need to do and by when they need to do it. One of the things that, uh, is stipulated in the regulation is that the accreditation review council will give a date of when they expect these things to be, uh, done. So remember, if a system gets conditionally accredited for any reason and they're, and they're asked to put something in place and have it to the ARC by, let's say, November of, you know, the following November, then that will come back. If the ARC says, okay, it's there, we believe that they have fulfilled that area for improvement, they will come back to you for a new accreditation recommendation decision. And that could be to be fully accredited at that point in time. That does not mean that they start at that point their five-year process. They're still doing their five-year process from the moment that the accreditation, the first accreditation recommendation was made. So, and unless you have any questions.
Well, I think we've inundated with a lot of questions. But we do thank you. I mean, I think this, you certainly listened to this and this executive summary is, uh, I think more in line with what we requested. And I think the board members have asked that when the, uh, notification goes to the superintendent or whoever their designee is, that, that particular board member in that area be designate or notified plus the, uh, board president of the local board of education. And we also identify that as a, as a piece that would go out so that we go out simultaneously.
Okay, so let me make sure that I understand. You want you as a board member to be notified.
In our district.
In your district, for those that are within your district. And then, uh, definitely the school board president of that district. Okay.
Okay. And, uh, then, so there will be something that you'll have an option to do virtually so you can get on this site. So we have a little refresher before, uh, at least before we start having to read these for the May meeting.
Okay.
Okay, Jean?
I just wanted to mention that some of us share districts, so that would be probably two board members.
Some cases, three.
Or three.
Right, I have the list from Peggy. She sent me the list, uh, and we've been using that to update when school districts move accreditation, which next year will probably be the last year that that could happen. But I do have that list.
Okay, great. Okay, I think we've probably inundated our brains with enough on accreditation.
Look, and I, I think I was the last person, so I'm letting you.
You are the last person for the day.
Yeah, you can't blame me for not having lunch, no.
But we do, uh, please, uh, give, uh, our thanks to you and your team and to the ARC. So I know the ARC has a lot of work to do yet coming up very soon. Uh, they've been doing a lot of work, but there will be more coming up soon. So, uh, please let folks know. We appreciate the work and as people have said, we know this is a lot and we know our systems have been doing a lot of work and we appreciate what they're doing. Cause, uh, it is, it is a lot of work, but it's good, good work.
Absolutely. And, and if you go through this report, the second one that I gave you, and you see anything that needs adjustments, please let me know.
Okay. Jean?
I just had a question. I know that, that we're gonna do that training to, um, look at, get into KISA and, and to do that. Is there any possibility, rather than having them have to do it, um, electronically, that we could just come early to the April meeting and maybe do it from nine to ten or something? Rather, that way you all would be here and. On, on the Tuesday?
Well, the other thing that you might, is there any way that we can get our username and get our password reset before the April?
Absolutely. I can go ahead and request the list of usernames for this particular application, give it to Peggy and then have Peggy send it to you all individually. Um, and I could give instructions on how to reset, uh, for your password.
Okay. Well, and some of us will do this.
Zero, zero, one.
On our computers at home.
Right.
So. I don't know if that's good or bad, but that's what we're gonna be doing, so. Okay, well, Jeanette, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time and appreciate your work. Okay, board members, that is our last agenda item. So for the good of the order, we are adjourned, thank you very much.